The place is the School City of E Chicago Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street in East Chicago, Indiana. This is also being shown via livestream at www.scec.k12.in.us. This is a meeting of the school board and the public for the purpose of conducting the schools' corporation business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Trusty Gomez?
Present.
Trusty Smith?
Present.
Trusty Rodriguez?
Present.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Present. Can we stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
(inaudible)
Now, we have item 103, mission statement. Superintendent Dr. Burney?
Good evening. Our mission: The school city of E Chicago educates and empowers every student through aligned instruction, meaningful partnerships, and differentiated practices to ensure success in life, college, career, and civic engagement.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Are there any comments from the public? Is there a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam President, I make the motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Trusty Smith and second by Trusty Gomez. Now, we'll have our administrative report.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Trusty Gomez?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now, we have our administrative report from Superintendent Dr. Burney.
Good evening again, school board and community of School City of E Chicago. This is my report for July 8, 2025. We ended the summer school session with a total enrollment of 595 students across two elementary buildings and obviously our secondary building at Block. We did lose approximately 70 students due to attendance and/or behavior. We had a total of 29 students participate in our summer enrichment program. 24 students were withdrawn due to attendance and/or behavior, and some were withdrawn due to their program being canceled. As part of my teacher retention efforts, three individuals passed their parapro certification test at the end of the school year. Two of those individuals are interested in working for S C E C, and one is already employed. This allows us to have, build our capacity for our paraprofessionals, which are much needed as a resource and support for our students. 23% of the 65 emergency permit licensed teachers from 24-25 school year have transitioned to fully licensed teachers. We want to give kudos to our human resource department for this major accomplishment. And finally, on July 1, we launched the School City of E Chicago's brand-new website. I'm most excited about the new design and layout, but what excites me the most is the opportunity for our community to interact and engage with the website specifically via the student spotlight, the staff spotlight, as well as the alumni spotlight. We're very excited. If you have not done so, please check it out. Thank you to our instructional technology team for designing, and Mr. Ontiveros and Mr. Torres, as well as their committee for feedback. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Burney. Now, we'll go to consent agenda. Are there any comments from the audience? Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda four, item four.
Motion made by Trusty Rodriguez?
Second.
Second by Trusty Smith. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam President.
Yes.
Just for attorney hearers, for the approval for the minutes to the exec sessions, are there's a language requirement involved in approving these?
Yes. So, there is a requirement that we have the board president read a certification so that board members have an opportunity to dissent if they have any issue with the topics that were covered during the executive session. And basically, what the certification is, is that there was an executive session held, that those executive sessions were April 17. I think those are the only ones on the agenda now for approval, but that there was an executive session held and there was nothing discussed during that executive session other than the information included in the posted and advertised notice. And if there are any board members who would dissent that certification, they can say so now, and if not, you can proceed on with the menu, or with the meeting.
Any more comments from the board, from the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Yes, Trusty Gomez.
I want to go into the invoices, and I'm sorry, I don't have the electronic copy in front of me, but...
That's fine.
I'm looking at a... An item, it's coming out of Perkins, apparently. This is for a conference June 15 through 18. It's called Certified Surf Report Education Conference. I don't see any...
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd like to know more about this particular conference.
Madam President? Yes, I think we're waiting on somebody to give Jesse an answer. To what was that you were looking for, Trusty Gomez?
It's the first item in the invoice in our paper copies.
And who was, what is about?
It's June 15 through June 18.
A conference?
It's a conference that apparently was held in Texas. This is for, it says certified, and this may be a typo, Surf Report Education Conference.
Yeah. Can you answer that, Dr. Burney, please?
That was a CTE teacher conference.
Who was that, who went on the conference, though?
CTE teachers.
No, the teachers. The teachers went on the conference, he said.
Okay.
Oh, he don't seem to think that it was the CTE teachers. It was somebody else that went on it. Do you know, Ms. Pena? Give them dates, Jesse.
It's June 15 through June 18.
Madam President, could we have the claim docket number?
Yeah, what's the claim docket? Jesse took an invoice. I don't even know if it's, is it on the claim docket?
It's in the invoice.
So, it should be on the claim docket, too. It should be on here, too.
Trusty Gomez, do you know the name? Is there any title on top? I'm not seeing it.
It's from June 15 through the 18, Ms. Pena. I know, and it should, it should be on, I don't even think it's on here.
If I could get the name of the actual conference?
Okay. The name of the conference, yeah.
On that conference, there was a hotel reservation, there was Katrina Alexander that attended that conference? That's not, that's not what I'm seeing here.
Oh, he got something different, didn't he? It ain't on here. It's not on here.
We are too.
Yeah, and it should be on here, too, but it ain't on here.
For those of us who are using the digital, it's the pre-run invoices, the pre-run docket, yeah.
Madam President, there's a discrepancy between what Mr. Pena is telling me...
Uh-huh.
Sorry, excuse me. And what's on this invoice, if we could pull that item from here. There's a different individual's name attached to this.
It's not on the claim docket either, is it?
I think Trusty Taylor said that there is a...
Oh, this is what you got. No, this is, this is the invoice, Dr. Burney, that he's talking about right there. That's that individual there. And this... So, it's not on here, though. Why was it not on here, too? Well, it should be on here, too. Oh, you see it on 14? Oh, let me look on there. Let me see, page 14. Page 14 on the claim docket. Okay, yeah, but it don't have no name. It just, it just says the resort. Okay.
Madam President, if you could just pull, pull check number 118083.
What number is that, Jesse?
It's 118083.
Yeah, that's it on the claim docket. That's why I come, well, we're looking for the name. Yeah, go ahead.
So, I believe in a previous meeting, there was an email that was attached to, that was attached to the invoices?
Mm-hmm.
That spoke to this reservation, but I believe the email was to the individual's name that's on this pre-run docket, so that's probably why this name is on there, not everyone that's, that attended, because I think she was the one that made all the reservations. I was probably about two, three meetings, maybe about three meetings ago, but the email with this individual's name was on there for this exact reservation, because we had questioned it back then as well.
Everybody's name should have been on here. Yeah, I like to think. I'm sorry, Madam President.
I mean, I may, maybe on a reservation, but on a purchase order, I'm not sure if everyone's who had a reservation should be listed. I, I don't know.
Well, I'm saying that when we go, we are all listed individuals.
Okay.
When we go, it's all, it's all in our name, money, and everything. I, Madam President, I had questions about that... Trusty Smith. I'm sorry. Questions about that same particular claim docket, claim number. What was this conference and who attended? The same one, 87118083. 118013? That's the same one that I think he's talking about. Yes. That was held in Texas. Yes.
So, you're talking about the same Surf Report conference. So, three staff members went?
Oh, three people went.
I believe Ms. McGee, Ms. Alexander, and Ms. Stowall.
Can I start now? Okay. Page seven, claim docket number 87725. I just want to explain to the community that when you see New York Life, those are the bonds that we've taken out. So, when you see that, I just want you to understand, those are the bonds that have been taken out to do our school. Ms. Simmons has provided us in work sessions, the bonds, what they're doing, and how far they are with them. She, not only does she explain it in the work session, but she also explains it in the board meetings. So, I just want you to know that when you see New York Life, it's not a credit card, it's the bond. And she will give us updates every month on how we're doing with this bond, and we have been fortunate to pay off one, but we had to pick up another one. But that's her expertise, and, but she will give the community and the board the information on where we are with that bond. So, I just wanted to let you all know that page seven, that particular claim, that's the bond for the project for our schools. But now, I said that, page 14, claim number 87303. 87303. 87303, claim. Yes. Was this a conference? If so, who attended, and what was the conference for? And I see it came out of the Perkins Grant. These are the things that we need to know. We don't have a problem with you going to conferences, but we do need feedback. When we come back from conferences, we give you all in detail of what we learn and what we want to see happen in our district, and I would ask that the administrators that go on these conferences would come back with the respect of letting our taxpayers and stakeholders know exactly what these conferences are for. I'm gonna go to the next one, page 15.
Trusty Smith?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, interrupt you. That conference, we will have a formal presentation from the attendees in August when the teachers return.
Presentation in August?
In August.
Okay. Page 15, claim 87814. What contract is this? Is that page 15, Trusty Smith? Page 15. 87814? 8781, yes. It was the same conference we just got to talking about, it's page 14, I'm sorry.
I don't think that.
Say something, Mr. Pena?
I don't think that was a conference.
I don't think so.
Eight seven seven nine one, is that what she said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a reimbursement for a medical thing that they had to do, medical testing, or they had to do some sort of a testing for, I don't know if it was for employment or that.
There's an invoice on page seventy-seven to speak to that. You're correct.
Yeah. Madam President?
Yes, uh, Trustee Rodriguez?
Uh, Dr. Bonet, if, to be clear, if we could make, um, sort of, in front of the reimbursement, like if it's mileage reimbursement, just put mileage ream, R, R, okay, R E I M B. We'll know that it's mileage or medical or any other items. Because if you just have reimbursement, we don't know what it's being reimbursed for.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll let the business office know about that.
The second one seems to be also a reimbursement for a medical expense.
Yeah.
It's on page seventy-eight.
On page, which one?
Seventy-eight of the invoices.
Oh, you're looking at the pay invoices.
The actual invoice, yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, that's how I, we'll find out what's for.
You ready?
Yeah, for you, you.
Uh, page twenty-four. Claim number eight seven eight three two.
Eight seven eight three two.
That is the vendor that provides our criminal background checks.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
That's the vendor that completes our criminal background checks.
So it's eight seven eight three two?
Yes.
Okay, let's see, eight seven eight.
My question to you is, and maybe this might be out, uh, so these are the people, this is the company. Why have we never seen this company before on the claim docket?
Mr. Pena might be able to speak too, but we've always been using Safe Hiring solutions, is that correct?
Yes, we have.
Has it been there before?
Yeah.
Okay, and what is it, eight seven eight, what now?
Three. Uh, eight seven eight three two.
Okay.
That's the Safe Hiring, their annual, their annual fee.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure whether the hiring company.
Is this on page twenty-seven?
No, no, that's the, uh, like, uh, Dr. Bonet said, the, uh, company that provides the background checks for us.
Okay. All right. Stay on page twenty-four.
Okay.
Eight seven seven five one. Eight seven seven five two.
Eight seven five two. Yes, there was supplies that they bought for the career coaching, out of the career coaching grant?
Yes, um, to my understanding, now correct me, um, this career coaching, um, didn't they receive a grant for that?
Yes, so those monies that you see listed are five thousand dollars of that grant can be used for supplies.
That's what they use it for.
And they use it, they're fund, they use their grant funding for this, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that's, uh, you see, it's Fund one seven two dash five, that's for that grant.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now go to page twenty-five. This is the same thing, basically, uh, claim eight seven seven, eight seven 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 one, eight seven eight oh one, eight seven eight three seven. All of those were conferences.
Yes.
Were, and I see that they were paid out of the Cade Logan's Foundation. But still, we need to know. Yeah. Reimbursement, and, uh, I'm seeing, well, let me go to eight, eight seven eight oh one.
Mm-hmm, that one is higher.
May I ask, why was this con, why was this amount so much and everybody else was a little less? May I ask, Mr. Pena?
Uh, I would have to look at the, uh,
Okay.
invoices themselves, what the detail was of those.
Further, the board need further clarification, Mr. Paul.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay, even though I know it was paid out of the Cade Logan's Foundation. Thank you, um.
Excuse me, um, while we're on that note, uh, what were the other fees then for the other two individuals? Uh, I'm unclear, you said you, you took one car?
Rental car.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Page twenty-six. Um, claim eight seven seven eight oh, eight seven eight one three. I see it's a conference reimbursement, um, but I'm also looking at, was that a conference for title?
Yes.
Okay, just need to know. Okay, page twenty-seven. Eight, claim number eight seven seven four six. When did this activity take place?
Community engagement.
Page twenty-seven. Eight seven seven four six.
It appears it cut off at S U, so I'm assuming supplies?
They were supplies.
So they bought some supplies already for the community engagement?
Yes.
Really?
Mr. Pena, is that something that's coming up? I don't know, I would have to look at the, uh, again, the invoices of that. I don't know if that was for something that already happened or if it's something that's coming up.
So you're saying they purchased before it was approved?
It would have been a purchase order for that.
Okay. Now, let's, let's go down here to, um, eight seven seven six seven. Can anybody explain that to me?
Yes, that's the monthly, uh, payment we make to communities and schools. You should see down your board docket every month.
Eight, what's the number, Diane, you say?
Eight seven seven six seven.
It's on the same page?
Yes, ma'am. Mm, let's see. It says, community and schools, site coordinator.
Let me ask, is this is half that we have to pay with the, with the community and schools, the one that, or is that what you're talking about?
That is correct.
So, um, so how often do we have to pay?
Monthly.
At that price?
Yeah, and this is what we hit, okay, we'll deal with that.
Okay, we'll deal with that. All right, um. Bear with me, you all, I'm going through every one of these claims, yes.
While, while we're on that subject, is that monthly for the entire calendar year or the school year?
Yes, the communities and school contract runs, I believe, for twelve months.
Twelve months, thank you.
We can verify.
Okay, page twenty-eight. Claim eight seven seven five eight through claim eight seven seven eight seven. There was another conference.
Eight seven seven, what'd you say, Trustee Smith?
Eight seven seven five eight.
That's the same conference for Certiport. That's a CTE staff one.
He said same conference for what, Dr. Bonet?
The same Certiport conference that we mentioned earlier.
What number was that? Oh, down here, eight seven seven five eight?
Yeah, and eight seven seven eight seven.
So these are the same ones that we talked about earlier up under the, um, Mrs., Mrs. McGee, Mrs., Mrs., um,
Alexander.
Alexander, okay, we just don't see her name.
Okay, no problem.
Madam President, I'm done.
Okay.
One item, I thought I heard Superintendent say, these were all teachers.
Yeah, he said CTE.
One, one of those individuals is not listed as a teacher.
Yeah.
One of them is not listed as a teacher.
Yeah. Yeah, we see that.
That one right there.
Yeah. And you could see it on the accounts payable voucher. That individual's title is Director of School Improvement and Federal Grants, not a teacher.
Page twenty-nine. Page twenty-nine. Claim eight seven seven six eight. That's another conference.
Eight seven seven six eight. It's on page twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight seven seven six eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we sent a number of our staff who work with the grants to the title conference.
So this is a grant title conference?
This is a title conference?
That is correct.
Okay, while we're on the same page, claim number eight seven seven eight nine. It says student tuition. Is that for, it's a tuition, but it's for, is it for a student or is it for an adult, for the deans that's?
So that's under the section Fund Title Two, so it's for a staff member.
Is what's for a staff, not a student?
Correct.
Well, we need to have that changed then for staff.
Okay. Now, we have page thirty. Now, correct me if I'm wrong. Claim eight seven 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 four, eight seven seven nine zero, eight seven eight three four. All of this is together?
Yes.
That, that our children participate in this boot camp?
Those are staff members. And so those are staff at Harrison where we have our dual language program.
So all three of these individuals attended that, Dr. Bonet?
Yes.
At this cost?
That is correct.
Well, no, that's, that's adding, that's, that's rolling over adding, let me see.
But the only reason why I asked is because when they said boot camp, I knew that that was a situation where some of our children were supposed to go to a boot camp.
But they didn't go.
And they didn't go, so.
This is not these kids.
This, these aren't students, this are staff members, this is paid for out of Title Three. Um, so D L is abbreviation for dual language.
Title Three Conference. Okay, I got a question. You finished, Trustee, Trustee, uh, Smith?
I'm done with me.
Trustee Gomanson, Trustee Taylor, you have anything to say?
No.
What about you, Trustee Rodriguez?
I do have one.
Okay.
Just to get a quick update, eight seven eight four zero.
What page?
Eight seven. Eight four zero, on page twenty-four.
On page, oh, eight twenty-four, okay, what's the number?
Eight seven eight four zero.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that question too.
Yeah, just, so, if you can give, give us a quick update on that.
So those were the remaining invoices to be paid to Stone Group. They were, we, they had concluded their contract or we had terminated their contract, uh, but we had not paid out their invoices.
Were they able to contact you back with regards to what, uh, or just return their?
They did return Ms. Simmons' phone call. Because they wanted payment.
This would be our last billing from them, correct?
That is correct, I believe those are the remaining bills on, for our Stone Group.
Did we get somebody to come in to, to, to do the job that they were supposed to be doing, it was supposed to be outsourced? Did we get somebody to come in?
We still have an ad hoc plan for attending to HVAC.
Who is that?
I cannot think of the name of the company.
But we do have, but we got somebody.
But it's the same, I'm sorry, Precision Controls. It's the same company that have been working with.
Precision Control.
HVAC Controls.
Are there any more questions from the board?
Madam President, I just wanted to go back to that, uh, initial.
Go back to what, Trustee?
The initial, um, question I had. So Superintendent said there were three teachers, but one of them is not a teacher, so what was the purpose of that individual?
What page was that on? That was on last page?
That's the very first one, um.
On the, on the last page?
I believe it's on page twenty-two.
Page twenty-two. No, it's on page twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, would that be claim eight seven seven five eight?
Eight seven seven eight seven.
Yeah, I had mentioned that one.
Yeah.
That was a conference. Who attended and what conference was it?
Yeah, it was the one that was in Texas.
That was the one from Texas?
Yeah.
So my question was that these other two individuals are teachers, this person is not a teacher.
I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry.
Why would she have gone to that conference?
Did you repeat your question?
The, you had mentioned earlier that the three people that went were teachers.
Yes, so there was an administrator that attended because the current CTE director was not able to attend.
I, I, why would, why would she have to go though? That's not part of her duties.
Sorry, say it again?
Yeah, why would she go? It's not part of her duties.
So there is a line on everyone's job description that says other duties as assigned.
So, um, how does this apply to, um, to this conference?
So if you recall, as part of our strategic plan, strategic goal four is improving career pathways. So part of that improvement is first making sure our teachers have built instructional capacity to know what other schools are doing in order to be, um, competitive nationally, and so that is why they sent. And then Ms. Stovall's role as Director of School Improvement, um, which we have attempted to explain to the board, the scope of that role. It's not just limited to federal grants, but it's also able to support strategic initiatives that align itself with school improvement.
On that invoice, um, I'm looking at the accounts payable voucher. It was signed off on, uh, June twenty-third, by this individual, and then there's another signature at the bottom that is signed off by another individual. Both of those are, both of those are dated past the date of the conference.
Is that rhetorical?
It's a question that I have that, uh, why are there two individuals signed off on this accounts payable voucher?
That's a question probably more. That's a question probably more suited for someone in the accounts payable office.
There's only one claim though. There's two signatures on here. That, that's not what it appears, there's just a blank signature.
You have any more questions, trustee Rodriguez? I mean, Gomez.
I'm done. No, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, um, Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Now we'll go to the, um, new business, um, item five point zero one, approval of the personnel report. Are there any questions from the audience? Okay. I'd like to get a motion. Would I later, um. I need to have something, uh, removed off of here for further discussion on the personnel report here. Yeah, we're gonna table it. We'll table it.
Just table it.
Yes, but let me get, can I get a motion? To table. Yes, to table.
Wait, are we gonna discuss that today or in another session?
No, we're gonna discuss it in another, we're gonna discuss it in privacy. But can we ask questions?
Yeah, we would.
Are we gonna do this in that section? Yeah. Right. No, just only one item, we're not tableing the entire personnel report. Yeah, I need a motion to table. The one item on the personnel report.
Until we.
We're gonna have, yes, exact session. Can I get a motion? And it's, um. Page nine here. For further discussion. Oh, I mean, I'm not paging, I'm sorry. It's, it's a sequence nine here, it doesn't have a page on it, it's the promotion, it's the page with the promotion on it.
May I ask some questions before we table it? Anybody go motion?
Madam President?
Oh, yes, trustee Rodriguez.
I make a motion to approve the personnel report five point zero one.
Second.
Okay, second, okay. Are there any discussions?
Madam President?
Yes.
The, I'm not, sorry, but wasn't fully engaged, the, um. The motions for the personnel report removing item nine?
Yes.
No.
No, not, it took, the first motion.
The motion was to approve it.
There's only one motion at this time, which is to approve the personnel report in its entirety.
We've already made a motion to approve it, now I'm asking for a motion to remove, uh, the, the promotion here. We've already got a first and a second, first by Rodriguez and take second by trustee Taylor.
Madam President, I'll make the motion.
Motion made by trustee Gomez.
Attorney Harris?
That's a secondary motion and there needs to be a second. So if there's a motion and we're waiting on a second. And if it doesn't get the second, then it fails and we go on to the underlying motion.
Want to ask a question?
Madam President? Can we move forward?
Yes, okay.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee Gomez.
Um, this question is for attorney Harris.
Yes.
I believe we have a policy in place that addresses the personnel report and the requirements for it. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Can you go over those with the board?
So, most recently, there was a policy that was adopted by the board to, um. I think the intent behind it was to offer full transparency with the personnel report and list names of individuals. That's the long and short of the policy though, was just to make that information available to the public.
And in viewing the, um, the board docs, um, the public view, um, does not have the names of the employees listed on it, nor according to that policy, if I recall, uh, it says that we are supposed to have a copies provided prior to the board meeting at the entry to the board meeting. I did not see any copies there, and as I look on the public domain, uh, there is no names listed on there, both of which are a violation of our policy.
What, what is the, what is that verbiage again, is it release of transparency?
That was just my summary of what the intent was behind the board, uh, taking that vote. Uh, the idea was just to make available to the public access to all the names that tie with the positions. Basically, it's an unredacted personnel report. And that, that's my understanding of the policy as well.
We haven't got a motion, I think.
So, at this point in time, Madam President, it looks like we're in violation of our own policy.
Policy here, okay, uh, what do we do, Mr. Harris?
Well, I think we should hear from the superintendent in terms of just his explanation as to why it appears the way it appears.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, so the approved personnel report after this vote tonight will be, will replace the current document that is on board docs. But we will make sure that we are following board policy, I thank our policy chairperson for pointing out the importance of following board policy, um, so we'll make sure we do that moving forward.
Okay, and now I would like for trustee Smith, you have something to say?
Regarding that particular situation?
Yes.
Yeah, Madam President, all due respect, I do have to ask some questions regarding that particular position. I, I need to know, was a committee, was there a committee that interviewed that person for the position? And how did that person rate on the interview? Those are things that I'm asking. How many years of experience has that person has working with that particular department? I'm not calling any names. Does the state of Indiana require this position to be licensed as a director? And in the past, what was the graduation rate of our special needs students? Which I know was very good. Uh, and can you describe the positive impact? Can this person describe the positive impact that they had provided in that department? And is that person currently in school for law, for earning her certificate and her degree?
Right, because this is, right, and, and those are some good questions, and this is why we needed to table this, so we can have further discussion on this matter. Because we had just found out as of today, uh, some issues at hand here that the board did not know about. And so we are asking, uh, the dispute table for further discussion. And that's according to our policy.
Um, these, Madam President, and these are some, these are some issues that, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but that should be HR's department to keep us updated on.
Right.
When we're doing, um, picking a new person for such a high-profile position, or any position. So, I'm quite sure, all of those questions that are asked, I'm quite sure that they have the answers for them. But once we, it, not interview them, but find out if they qualify for all of these, um, entities that's needed for that particular department. I have no problem with it, I just need to know something, I just need some answers. Because we're not gonna just keep hiring people, nor harm intended, we're not just gonna keep hiring people until we know that they're actually qualified. That's our problem. We're hiring people that are not qualified, not saying that that person is not qualified, but we need to know because our district is failing, in a mess. I'm just gonna put it like that. So, no harm intended, let's just go through, table this, go back, revisit it ASAP, and put the right person in there, I'm quite sure that person is the right person, I don't know. But we're not gonna start playing these, these games back and forth with people in positions and, and, and everything's all over the place. So, in 2025, 26, as a board member, I, 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 maybe I'm out of line, but I'm, I'm tired of this, I'm tired of this, and we have to move on because, uh, our children are not excelling, they're failing because of personnel that we vote for and don't have a clue if they are qualified for that position. And that's just my point of view. Take it or leave it, that's just my point of view. You must have, in order to excel, you must have qualified people to do the job. So I'm not saying they don't have it, we just need to just slow it down for a minute, because we are going to have to make a lot of adjustments as of 25. We thought we had twenty-five, twenty-six covered, but if you read the news, you know that that's not gonna happen. So we have to be very, very careful on who we hire and how much we're paying that person if they're qualified. You're not gonna be hired unless you're certified or qualified, I'm just sorry. That's the way I feel. Because it's not fair for somebody else to come in and, and, and they're qualified, but because of this, that, and the other, or my friend, or my cousin, or whatever, and you get the job. Not gonna happen. We need qualified teachers, qualified principals, qualified coaches, whatever we need. We're gonna do this the right way because 2025, 26 is gonna be a really rough year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Madam President?
I guess I just gave my trustee remarks.
Yes. Okay.
Madam President?
Oh, yes, trustee Taylor.
So I just wanted to share my perspective and my view on this, um, it, it does, I am conflicted with it because I, I fear that we may be overstepping our bounds as, as a school board trustee. Um, I agree, we, we need qualified people, uh, and, and that should be our ultimate goal. But I think we need to leave qualified people to determine who is qualified. I, 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 you know, I, I just fear that we may be overstepping our bounds a little bit in a sense of, yeah, we do, you know, approve, or we make, um, I guess approvals is the right word, based off of the recommendations, but that's why I would like to hear from the qualified person or a person with that expertise to, to share, you know, how was this person hired or things of that nature? I don't wanna make that decision as to who should be hired based off of who I think is qualified, because I don't know that job. So I will have to defer to the person that does or the, or the expertise in the room to tell me, hey, if, you know, is this person qualified or not? You know, I, I, I'm, I think of an analogy, because I know we all want what's best, we, we're all like, we are tired of having a fading school district. Lately, I've been burdened and overwhelmed with a lot of personnel issues. I don't feel like we're spending our energy and our efforts into our children, and it makes me think of, um, an analogy that was shared with me one time. Two parents are, there's a father and a mother and, and a child on a cruise ship, and the, the child falls overboard and the child is drowning. And mom and dad are just arguing about whose fault is it, who wasn't paying attention to the child, and all along, the child is drowning, and no one's paying attention to the child that's drowning, because our focus is not in the right place. So that is my concern, um, you know, yeah, let's hear it out, we could discuss, but I just wanna make sure that we stay within our bounds and, and within our lane of, we set policies, we approve budgets, contracts, and we hold this man accountable for operational outcomes. We agreed, there were some issues in, in HR, so I don't wanna step in and do HR's job. I have my own, I have my own department that I run, I don't operate with micromanaging, that's how it feels. Um, I, and that's just, again, my perception, because I, I work in corporate, so I, I know, I know when those, when those lines are being crossed, and if we're not cautious, I fear that we are crossing that line and putting our efforts elsewhere other than our children.
And she's. Trustee, uh, Taylor, you are absolutely correct. This should not be our problem. So, I'm, I still wanna know some information, but I'm still gonna say this. We're not HR, um, and I do agree with you on that, we, we're not focusing on our children. But this is a special, uh, position, so, you know, and if we table it, and we keep tabling it, and a committee did interview the person, and we don't, and I guess that person came up, number one. This is just my speculations, I don't know, I, because nobody talked to me about anything. I'm not on a committee, and that's not my position to be on a committee. So, for now, I wanted to table it, but I have to think about our kids, and the longer we table things, we prolong things, but we do need qualified people.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not gonna take that away, I'm not taking that away.
And, and tabling things result?
We're not, we, we're not, first of all, let me explain. The board was just made aware of some things, and we are always surprised at the last minute, okay? And that should not, that should not keep happening, okay? So, once we get transparency, well, we know that, that we have all the information, we are the, the ones that have to make the decisions here. We're not saying who needs to be, we're not making nobody's, uh, uh, department, uh, we're not, that's not what we're doing. What we're doing is trying to make sure that we have the right people in place, paying the right amount of money, and as you all know, that there has been a lot of money that has went through this board. And, uh, as I keep saying, our children are first, first, they must always be put first, and we must always think like that. And we already know what our district is all about, I'm not gonna keep on saying what it's, because the proof is in the pudding, okay? So, when we find out things at the last minute, this is what happens, this is why I ask we not to have a discussion out in the audience, okay? These questions that we're having, we're, we do this behind closed doors. And so, um, Madam Secretary, can I get a vote, a roll call please?
Madam President, can you make any more comment?
Yes.
I, I, um, I, I would agree with you, you know, when, when we're handed stuff and we don't have an opportunity, you know, this board meeting, um, was supposed to come after a work session. Where we could have fleshed out a lot of the questions.
Right.
But the failure to have a work session leads to unanswered questions, and I wanna make an educated decision based on many of the questions that trustee. and I want to make an educated decision based on many of the questions that trustee Smith has.
Right, she has a lot of questions.
It was once told to me that, you know, it was another story that, you know, nature abhors a vacuum, and when it sees a vacuum, a vacuum in leadership, then the vacuum is going to be filled, the board's moving in to fill the, the, the vacuum. And so, you know, with that said, I feel uncomfortable voting on something that I've really not had an opportunity to engage in a conversation with and have answers to, so, we could proceed at, at your, at your pleasure.
So, I'm asking for a table of this item here so we can just further discuss all these questions that we have right now.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Hold on, I think there was already a motion, and we were just waiting on a second.
On a second, yes.
There was my motion.
We're tabling the, the, uh, item that's on the personnel report that we have a lot of discussion about, which we will get to. The discussion, like I said, it was just brought to our attention today, and we didn't have a work session to discuss this in, so this is what we're trying to do right now. Because Mrs. Smith had, Diane Smith has a lot of questions, and she asked our questions out. Pardon? Yeah, so we need a second.
Madam Secretary, can we proceed?
Pardon?
Can we proceed?
Go ahead, uh, trustee Gomez.
So, my, I was seconding President Gibson King's motion.
You, you already had your motion on the floor, so.
Understood, but we went to another discussion, but still.
Yeah, it didn't take the motion away, it just still needs a second.
Yeah, it needs to be second, uh, trustee Gomez.
So, I, I made the motion, Madam President.
Right, and look, wait, waiting on the motion to be second.
Understanding from the audience, what motion are you waiting on to be second?
A second.
A second. Trustee Gomez.
What was his motion? Did he repeat his motion?
To table it.
To table it.
To table an item.
Mm-hmm.
One light item on, on the personnel report.
Madam Secretary, this has been maybe 10 minutes now, that we've been going over the same motion without a second. Can we move forward?
Yes, we'll move forward on the matter.
Madam Secretary?
Yes.
I mean, uh, Madam President?
Yes, trustee Gomez, I mean Rodriguez.
Uh, roll call, Madam President, I guess that's what I'm asking for.
Okay, roll call, um.
The, the only thing that's going to happen next is the roll call on the only motion and second that's on the floor. Approval of the personnel report.
Okay, trustee Gomez? Trustee Smith? Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
No.
So, does that mean the whole personnel fo, report just failed?
Yes, it does.
Madam President, we can move on to five, five point zero two?
Yes, thank you. So, we go on to five point zero two now. We'll go to five point zero two, approval of the speech services contract renewal with parallel learning for the 2025, 26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for five point zero two?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve five point zero two.
Motion made by trustee Gomez.
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Roll call. Are there any questions from the, from the board? No from the board? Yes, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Five oh three, approval memorandum of understanding with Starbase for 2025, 26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve five point zero three memorandum with Starbase.
Motion made by trustee Gomez?
Second.
Second by trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Five point zero four, approval memorandum of understanding with the East Chicago Central Alumni. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a second to approve five point zero four?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve five point zero four.
Motion made by trustee Gomez?
Second.
Second by trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, this is a question for Attorney Harris, um, for, um, you've had a chance to review this MOU?
Yes, all of them on the agenda, yes.
Okay, great, and then, um, so as part of the, the question I have, if, um, I, I'm trying to understand the mechanics of how this works, the payments are going, how, how does it work, maybe it's easier for me to ask? Somebody wants to make a purchase or donation, how do they, how does that all work?
All right, you're talking about five point zero three right now, right?
Five point zero four.
Five point zero four.
Yeah.
Hold on, let me open it.
Just write a check to the alumni. Simple as that. Just write a check to the alumni.
There isn't any special procedures that's outlining the agreement as to how it should or shouldn't happen? I think it's just an administrative decision, how they do that?
I, I'm just asking, I, I don't know, you know, what State Board of Accounts' opinion is on something like this, you know, as we're engaging with a third party, basically.
Yeah, I think that's a Ms. Simmons question, um, not necessarily on the agreement side of things, but more of the procedures that you put in place to ensure internal controls. So, what I'll do is talk to her about that, and then we can report on it.
If you could follow up, I'd appreciate it.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Got a question, trustee Smith?
So, you're just saying you got to follow up because of what?
So, the question is how the mechanics of this work. Like, once you actually implement the agreement, how will it work? I think what trustee Gomez is saying is, will we have any requirements to properly document this for State Board of Accounts compliance? So, it's a good question, but it's more of a Lea question than it is a question on my end. So, she's got, her and her office have to put those procedures in place, and she may already have them in place, um, but we just need that reported back to you all.
I'm quite sure she does. So, I, I, I don't, okay, I think we're taking this a little bit too far with, with, with all of these extra questions about this particular alumni. You, I mean, you make a check out to the East Chicago Central Alumni, and that's the end of it. It's a donation. And if I purchase a chair, then I can write it off on my, I'm quite sure they'll give me a receipt, and I can write it off on my taxes if that's what I chose to do. I mean, that's not a difficult situation here, it's just easy. A third grader could figure that out, you, you're not going to give anybody cash, you're going to write a check out so that you can know that you have a, 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 a track. Uh, I mean, it's just simple. We make things so complicated. And it's a MOU. It's not like somebody's getting a contract.
It's not costing the district money, we're actually donating back to our school city.
Right, it's donations.
Been doing it for 10 years.
Are there any more questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Five point zero five, approval of non-certified employee agreements for the 2025, 26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Is there a second?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve five point zero five.
Motion made by trustee Gomez?
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Uh, any questions from the board?
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, we do have a, um, with our new labor attorney, are, are we engaging? I know this is, these are non-certified employ-
Yeah.
-agreements, um, uh, Attorney Harris, do you know if they're involved in these?
He has not been involved in these particular agreements, but he has been engaged. We've got a meeting scheduled for later in the week, and we plan on, um, talking to the superintendent about that as well, to have him present. I don't know that it's necessarily related to these particular agreements that are before the board, but, um, that is on the radar, though, of onboarding the new, uh, labor attorney.
And I'm sorry, again, I have my paper copies, might be easier to find it electronically. Who is, who is considered a non-certified employee? I think that board's been wrestling with that question for some time now.
Non-certified employees are deans and other administrative staff, particularly in the operations, business operations department, includes some instructional technology administrators such as director of transportation and security, et cetera. The ones that are listed in the contract.
Uh, what page would it, I'm sorry, where would it be at on our board docs? I don't know where would it be at on the board docs. Madam President, if you just give me a second.
Yeah, go ahead. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Approval of occupa, five point zero six, approval of occupational therapist contract renewal keyhole for the 25, 26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Is there, can I get a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion for fi, approval of five point zero six.
Motion made by trustee, uh, Gomez?
Second.
Second by trustee, uh, uh, Smith. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Five point zero seven, approval of deaf services contract trade wins for 2025, 26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Is, can I get a motion?
Madam President, make a motion for approval of five point zero six.
Motion made by trustee Gomez?
Second.
Second by trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Five point zero eight, approval of IEP writer contract renewal for Teresa Nweta for school, for the, for the 2025, 26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion? Something, did you want to say something? Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead.
It says IEP.
Yes.
I thought the teachers, they didn't write their IEPs.
That's what I thought.
Excuse me, Ms. Paul, can you speak up a little louder, sweetheart?
Oh, oh, that's good.
So, yes, most of the teachers will write their IEPs, but what's happening is the state of Indiana is moving towards a new platform. Most of the directors don't know this, but we've been, um, my team has been online, and we found out that every IEP has to be written because the new program does not, um, move all the information into the IEPs. That is a lot of work to write 30 to 40 IEPs and still hold the additional meetings. Um, that takes away from services. And so, what we're trying to do is help support the new teachers and to, to actually have those IEPs written so that the teachers will not have to do that. It's going to be a lot of work, a lot. Oh, they'll have to write, this is, yeah, they'll have to write.
Have to have case conferences.
This is for the new teachers, for new teacher training, and to help transfer some of these IEPs because you're talking about 700 and something IEPs. And if that's the case, we won't start services for, I don't know how long, because you're talking about, um, the new teachers. We help them, we help them. There's been a lot of training, there's been a lot of supports. One of the things that I will tell you is if you're going to lose a teacher, a new teacher, you're going to lose them if you don't get the, the supports. I do a lot of exit interviews with my people that leave, and one of the things is, the IEPs kill them. There's a lot of work, you're talking 40 pages sometimes, and a lot of work goes into these, collecting the data and everything. I would rather my teachers, or the teachers, I'm sorry, they're not my teachers right now, but I'm here helping. I would rather the teachers spend more time on services and, uh, collecting data than to have to do all of this over again. This is going to be a big undertaking, we're going to have a lot of people doing it. They, they'll do the ACRs. This is to help with the new teachers and to get all that information over. It's going to be a lot. I will tell you, it is going to be a lot.
And once the new teachers have adapted to this, so the next year, the following year, are they going to still keep this process because they're not?
Probably not, probably not. The next per, next year, it'll be more training from the team.
Yeah, because how long is this contract for?
This is for this year, and that's it, yes, yes. And I will say that a lot of times, like I said, if you know about IEPs, they're not just something you just get in there and write. There are a lot, there's a lot of information, a lot of data collecting, there's a lot that goes into this. But with this new platform that, uh, the state is purchasing and moving towards, it's going to be a nightmare. It's not even going to be up and running till the end of July. So, we don't have access to IEPs at this point for a long time. So, I can't even imagine what's going to happen at the beginning of the school year.
Go ahead, go ahead, no.
She's a retired teacher.
She's a retired teacher?
Mm-hmm.
And so, you just have to find her, what's his job for you?
This job, she actually helped last year, so this is a renewal. But this year, she'll be undertaking the new IEPs that have to be, uh, put in. There's a lot of move-ins, there's a lot of, um, paperwork, um, and she will be here this year, and the next year, she will not be here. This is her last year. Did you have a question?
Right, but the thing is, they should already have learned from the first time.
The teacher, so this, see, you, you've got two different things there. She's going to be helping the new teachers, training with that too, but she's going to be helping with the new platform. The teacher of record is responsible, they gather a lot of the information on the ACRs. They're responsible for implementing that IEP, they're responsible for making sure services are as specified. So, for example, we have one of, um, somebody related, right? She is, uh, she has not written an IEP till this year, she'll have a first IEP, and she's been a teacher. We make sure that they know what they're doing before because these are legal documents. We want to support our teachers as much as we can because of the fact that all you need is one lawsuit. I'm just going to tell you. And, you know, knock on wood, how many lawsuits have I had in 14 years, guys? I'll tell you what, you, you learn to write one IEP when you're in, in college. I would tell you, I would rather support my teachers, and that's what I'd like to ask you to approve.
So, you're saying that the people who are going to be writing the IEPs, the teachers are actually going to do it, because they-
They're going to write their, the ones that are on- They're going to write their, the ones that are ongoing, yes. The ones that actually have, have it together. I will say, you know, Coach Al is right there. He'll tell you how much support he got. He, he truly appreciated it. We, we need to help our teachers. Our teachers are leaving in droves. And right now, when they're coming out of college, or they are coming and they're, they have not learned, you don't want to take a chance on that. You want an appropriate, compliant, an IEP that works for the kiddos. And that's what we're trying to do.
So you're saying that this is the last year that this contract?
Yes, you will not see this again.
Right, okay. Because I know that when you have a case conference, the parents should be involved in the case conference and help writing the IEP with the goals, whatever you want.
And I, we make sure that our parents have every part. They have a major part, and
Right.
we are, we actually, yeah, there's, they are a very important part. Oh, no, parents. No, 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 no. This is more for the paperwork, to lessen the paperwork so that teachers can provide services and know their students. They're the ones providing the documentation.
So what is the year of the contract? Do we have the contract? What is the year of this contract, this renewal here? Yeah, 26, yeah, but, so it starts in school year of August, right? And then it ends in school year 26 for June?
May 29th, 26.
Okay, okay, so we'll find out what the salary, we'll find out what the, what is the salary? Or is it a? An hourly thing?
Yes.
Okay.
It's 100, 150?
How much what now? Not to exceed what?
It's not to exceed $21,900.
21, okay. What, yes, Trustee Gomez?
Can I make a motion to approve 5.08?
Yes, motion made by Trustee Gomez?
Second.
Second by Trustee Rodriguez.
Trustee Smith.
Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Smith, I'm sorry. Madam Secretary.
Madam President?
Yes.
I do have a question.
Yeah, oh, yes.
I, I wasn't clear on Ms. Paul's comment. How many IEPs are there? The reason I ask is that the contract reads that there'll be 146 IEPs per this contract, so there's.
Right, I didn't, I hope she wouldn't be writing all 700.
Is that my question, excuse me, is there, is that an adequate amount of IEPs to be writing? Right, okay. Ms. Jensen?
migrate from Indiana IEP to a program called PC, or excuse me, called Power School IEP. It is a system that the district and all districts in the state are completely unfamiliar with. Now, one of the things the state also advised us is they would be conducting a full data migration. Now, some of you know I manage the tech department. A data migration means that the data from every prior IEP populates the fields in the new IEPs. We were advised that the Indiana Department of Education determined that that was a very pricey undertaking. It is. So what they did is what Nelson and I would call a data dump. They dumped all of the files from Indiana IEP into the new Power School system. What that means is every teacher of record will need to go into every student, and they will need to pull an old IEP, and they will have to migrate every field into the new system that they are completely unfamiliar with. This is a massive undertaking. And we will be able to, need to do this prior to progress monitoring students, when we need to hold a case conference. What it means is every teacher of record will be essentially rewriting every IEP. They may be using prior data, but they will still have to go in, copy, paste, move this. What field does this populate? How do the goals enter, and how do we load them that way? All of that information is going to have to be redone. Now, every district is going to have to do this across the state. We're not alone. But we know we are going to need all hands on deck to get this done.
So basically, what you said is a new formula.
It's a completely new software product.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And there are, I will tell you, there are five trainers that we've been advised. There are 30,000 teachers within the state of Indiana. We've also been advised that they do not have a system to auto reset passwords. So there are a lot of things that we have learned about the system that have us concerned, and we are planning for those concerns. So I hope that was a little more helpful. Contractual. So this, this individual is a retired teacher. She is extremely familiar with how an IEP functions. She is actually going to attend, and she has already been attending, some of the new training that we'll be doing. She will be working with our brand-new teachers that have never written an IEP, and she will be assisting them. She will also pitch in, in instances. Oh, yes, yes, yes. She will be utilizing the new program. She is not a trainer from Power School. So, but we will be using Power School trainers to help us get the district up and running, compliant, and every teacher supported. Is that a little more helpful?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
Are the, I'm sorry, are the Power School trainers, is there a cost for that, or that's included?
There is some online training, and I'm getting into waters that I'm not sure I should be getting into.
Okay.
We did have, on the personnel report this evening, the payment of teachers to come in a day early before school started. And Dr. Burney, realizing how concerning this, this challenge will be for the entire department and the district, has authorized the ability to bring two trainers in on the day before school starts. Teachers have already been contacted. They are, they are coming back in droves. Yes, we want this training, we know we need it. So we are bringing trainers in, and we're attempting to get them in and locked down before the rest of the state figures out that this is what's happening.
Okay. And this may be a question with Dr. Burney. Do we have, are we considering, like, having a super user that could be that go-to person and be that trainer? They could be, they could have those one-on-one, train-to-trainer sessions type deals?
Yes, we have discussed that, so our sped department has a plan for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. I skipped over 5.07. Approval of deaf service contract renewal trade wins for 25-26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 5.07.
A motion made by Trustee Gomez?
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Are there any questions? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Approval of 5.09, I mean, 5.09, approval of first reading for draft policy artificial intelligence and amendment for policies 0166.3. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion? Motion made?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.09.
Motion made by Trustee Gomez?
Second.
Second by Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. 5.010, approval of Silver's Learning Tutoring for St. Stan. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve 5.10?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 5.10.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez and second by Trustee Gomez. Are there any questions from the board? Yeah, I have a question since we are on the approval of Silver's Learning Tutoring for St. Stan. Now, I know that our school district, we were receiving Silver's Learning Tutoring as well, and I'd like to, like, to ask, like, to ask Dr. Burney, is our schools going to continue to be receiving these services such as St. Stan's is doing?
We use ESAR funds to use Sylvan last year.
We were not using ESAR. We were using TIDAL.
I'm sorry, say it again.
We were using TIDAL funds.
So we also use TIDAL funds, but we did use ESAR, and that funding source is no longer available.
With the title, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We will not be recommending the use of Sylvan.
But we do have, do we have TIDAL funds? Because we, Silver's Learning Center is, there's, is coming from TIDAL, right? Like, their titles, that they're getting.
Yes, so the non-public schools can access TIDAL funds to use Sylvan.
Okay. So you said that we would not be using Silver's Learning Center for our students?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Gomez.
On that same note, I believe in this, when this group was approved, we had asked for an exit report to see, to compare what they had done to previous methods we had used for tutoring. Dr. Burney, are you familiar with that?
I'm sorry, could you clarify your question?
Yeah, the question was, Sylvan Learning Center, and again, this is somewhat off this topic, but related. Sylvan Learning Center was approved by the board last year. As part of that approval, we had asked for data to show if they had made any progress or where they stood compared to years previously where we had used our own teachers for tutoring. Were you aware that there was a request by the board to have an exit report, if you will?
Yes, so that data was prepared to be presented at a work session when we brought up all the programs we were renewing. We have not had that work session yet.
Thank you. So, so by us not having a work session, we don't know where we're at with Sylvan, right? We don't know where we're at with the, with the, with the outcome, the data. We don't have the data.
That is correct.
Okay, then, so I don't know why you say we would not be having, having it if we don't have the data.
Because, well, I've looked at the data, and the team has looked at the data. So we won't be recommending it for the next year when we have that work session where we're renewing programs. We will present that information to the board, but we haven't had that work session yet.
Okay, so that's, that's it, we need the work session. Okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee.
Yeah, I believe that also, too, when it comes to the renewal of the contract
Yes.
with Silver Learning Centers, I think those questions can be asked at that time.
Oh, yes, that's what, that's what I wanted to ask that question. Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez.
You're welcome, Madam President.
Okay.
It was a point of order. I believe the superintendent said he was not going to recommend it, and therefore we couldn't discuss it because he's not recommending it. I think that was the point of the discussion by President Gibson King.
Right.
That we include this in a work session so that the board can look at this and determine, you know, where we're at from using our own teachers to using Sylvan, which is best for our children, since people had asked that we should keep children focused first.
Thank you, Trustee Gomez.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. Now, we've got 5.11, approval contract renewal for Infinity Counseling for 25-26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Rodriguez?
I don't see 5.11 on my.
Well, I'm not surprised, but go ahead on it, we'll read it to you.
But I'll check. Okay, so it's on, it's on the hard copy, but it's not, it's not on the board docs.
Well, I'll read it. Can you, you got it on your computer screen, or?
Yeah, it seems like what happened was, is on the consent agenda, 4.04 was the approval of Silver Learning Center tutoring for St. Stan's. And then at, and then on this hard copy, I see that 5.10 was the approval of Silver Learn, no, was the approval of Silver Learning Center for St. Stan's. That was my question, because my 5.10 states that it's the, it's the Infinity Counseling renewal for 25-26.
Yeah.
Have you guys seen that, too? So I just wanted to clarify.
Oh, yeah, so it's, but it's 5.11, but that's what we're going to go to, the approval contract renewal for Infinity Counseling for 25-26 school year. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion for 5.11?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 5.11.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez?
Second.
Second by Trustee Taylor. Are there any questions from the board?
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Gomez.
I figure you just have Superintendent give some details.
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, 5.11.
Okay. Yes. Infinity Counseling is a renewal that the counseling group has been with us for about four years, maybe. And Dr. Parker and her team comes into each of the schools, puts a counselor in each of the schools. And so they provide individual counseling for students. They provide crisis counseling, they provide family counseling so that the families do not have to leave the school. It's provided during the day. It's an additional counseling in lieu of maybe some of the social work. This is for most of our students that are really struggling with trauma, various incidences. Dr. Parker also has a day treatment for those students that really are struggling to be in school. We've used her this year for two students, and at no cost, the counseling is at no cost to the district. But if we should place a student there, we pay for, I want to say, like, $68 or $78 for the day. And that is, those are those students that are the most difficult students that we have tried everything. And what we do is we get them in extensive counseling, and then we work with the company to bring the students back and get them back into the school where they are, they can be successful. Now, Dr. Parker also is in the parent cafe, and that's something totally different.
And just for clarity, that daily rate, $75?
It's 75, okay, I, I knew it was around there.
Yep, close.
Yeah. I have quite a few contracts, but I, I know most of them.
Did you happen to know how much we expended on this contract?
This year? I would say the young person went there for maybe about a month and a half. And then the last two weeks, one of the high school students went there. Parents agree, they have to agree, and it, so I would figure if, say, if there are 20 days in the month, it would be 75 times 20. That's what we would pay, that would be our portion.
That's, that's the only cost.
That's the only cost, transportation, we provide the transportation.
I, I was asking, because Medicaid cuts, the board's been, you know, very.
And that may be something. One thing I will tell you, we've had parents that do not have insurance, have not been able to provide. Dr. Parker has charged, has never charged us a dollar. She does it, she'll get an intern to help out, but there's never been a bill come to us unless it's been a student that's been placed there. And there's only been those two students this past year. One was there a month, and one was there a little over a month, and one was there two weeks. And we're trying to keep the environment safe. It was just, we could not, we tried, and we tried, and we tried, but we also have to remember the other students and the staff.
Attorney Harris, Ms. Paul brought up an interesting comment. So the obligation, and is there any exposure for the schools on the services that they're providing?
Based upon your concerns with Medicaid, you mentioned?
References.
Like, subject to funding?
No, no, references. No, no, references, dealing with individuals?
Not any extraordinary exposure, no. And back to your point on Medicaid, paragraph 14 deals with its contingent upon Medicaid availability, and in no time, show any cost associated with the services by community partner be assessed to us. So it is all subject to that.
And she's never turned a student or family down, ever, ever. She's amazing with her, her family and staff. She also helps the staff if they're needed. And one of the things I forgot to mention is, if a child's in crisis and our social worker cannot get the parent to take them to the hospital, what we'll do is call Dr. Parker, she'll send somebody and evaluate them, and then say, you need to take them, or no, they're, they're safe to return to school. So the students either don't miss school, or they go and get the help they need. She's part of our crisis plan.
Oh, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poe. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trusty Gomez?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
No public comment.
Oh, oh, we don't have none?
No one signed up.
Oh, well, thank goodness. Okay, then, huh. You want to say something? Okay, so then we'll, well, okay, our trusty remarks, then. So, Trusty Rodriguez?
Uh, no comment.
Trusty Taylor?
Make it short.
Thank you.
I just always want to be able to, you know, again, I, I, I'm fully transparent, and I want to be transparent with the community as I committed to be. So when I vote in a way that does not align with the majority, I need you to understand why. So I have shared many times with my colleagues that I dare not cast a vote based off of their personal experiences with individuals, or without doing my own proper research. I, I just can't do it. I've had my own experience, and for that reason, I have to do my own research. Everyone's entitled to their own opinion, their own vote, and I can respect that. I may not agree to it, I may not like it, but I do have to respect it. Just expect the same in return. So yes, I voted in full support of the personnel report, and I am so disappointed, because I don't think we realized what we just did. It failed the entire personnel report, that it even included a certified math teacher, which we all know those are hard to come by. So I just hope that that didn't leave a bad taste in no one's mouth, and that they look at us a different way and try to look elsewhere. So just let me be clear, I wholeheartedly believe in accountability. I will always exercise my role in that aspect and in that respect, but at the same time, I just want to make sure that I'm not overstepping my boundaries or my governance as a board trustee. So I just wanted to share that. On a lighter note, we did kick off our alumni reunion week. Yes, you could clap for that. This marks 10 years of coming together, not just for fun and fellowship, but always for a cause. We are so proud of our schools, we love our schools, and all of our efforts are aimed at giving back to our schools. So that's why we are excited, I'm excited, to partner with I2Cing America, partner with School City, maybe Chicago, the Senators, the Rough Riders, and the greatest of them all, the mighty Cardinals, to enhance our auditorium for our future generations, because that's what this is all about. Thank you, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Trusty Taylor. Trusty Gomez? That's right. I'll go with you on that note. Okay, Trusty Gomez, please.
Before I came to, before I came to the meeting, I saw the video of those children that passed away and that blood down in Texas, it was horrible to see, so sad, seeing all these young lives taken. Obviously sympathies to them and, you know, their family. Really hard to, to imagine what they're going through down there in Texas. Just locally, I, I know I heard from some individuals that while some of the repair work is being done in our schools for the coming school year, in some cases, the, because this important amount of heat and humidity we've had lately up here has infected some of the, has affected some of the employees, so. Dr. Burney, if you could, I, you know, I know Ms. Simmons here is not here, and I don't know who really is in control or in charge once she is absent from the district, but given that she seems to be a conduit, I hope we have somebody in place that can address the needs of our employees and the contractors that we've hired to make upgrades to our buildings. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trusty Gomez. Trusty Smith?
No, I'm just kidding. I just want to say that I'm, I have to agree with Trusty Taylor. Time to time, the board members, as board members, we do need to handle what the board is elected to do, because that's what our position is. But unfortunately, things are not provided to us in a timely manner, that's why we have a work session, to discuss things that, that are very, very important to our district and to our teachers. So hopefully, this will be the last time, because we cannot keep doing this, because we're, we're losing out, like she said, we're losing out on people that we really need, and they're hard to get. Hopefully, the school year 2025, 26 will be a better year for our students. With that being said, once again, with all the professional development, the conferences, teachers mentoring programs, children's tutoring programs, I hope that our children will excel and not fail. We offer so much for our teachers and our principals, we offer a lot of support. We spend a lot of money on professional development, we spend a lot of money on conferences. So there's no reason why we can't come together and utilize the information that we have to bring our district up. So with that being said, I'm gonna leave that part alone. But as a board member and district, we have to work as one to help our children. Things are gonna change, people are not gonna like it. We were, if you watched the news, we were told that we had 26, 27, and all of a sudden, it was just swept away. So I'm just saying, we all have to work together to try to make it through this year, or how many more years we have? Okay, so anyway, so we gotta probably go back to some old-school ways of helping, and, and our parents, our parents, our community, we need each other. We actually need each other, so we have to really work together, whether you like me or not, or like him or like her. If it's for our children, then we have to do it. Back in the day, what did they do? If, if you didn't have any food, I'm gonna use Ms. Monroe. She fed everybody on Cary Street, I'm just using her as an example. So I'm just saying, Mr. Gordon, they fed everybody. So I'm just saying, as a community, we got, we gotta come together. We cannot be divided, and with that being said, I feel that with this particular situation, I think that there should be a special meeting to get this situation handled. I'm not gonna talk about it anymore, but you know what I'm talking about. I'm not gonna say it, but to get this handled, because we, we have other things we have to worry about now. And our focus is to handle this money. This is our focus, is about this money, to keep this school running. And we can't have people that's in position that don't know what they're doing, that's handling title, money, or grants. So, and I remember one, at one point, we had so many grants coming in here, we didn't even know what to do. Our kids were just inundated with grants. All of a sudden now, our principals don't write grants, nobody's, might not even be any money for grants now. But I'm just saying, we, we have to work together. So I think that they might not agree with me, but I think we need to have a special meeting to correct some things. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Smith. Trusty Rodriguez, I'm looking for this text that you sent about the cuts that they're making, do you have that available?
Here it is. I got it. I had it.
Yeah, do you?
Didn't you get that text just?
Yeah, but I can't find it.
It was on the 3rd of July.
Oh, it was?
It was on the 4th of July.
I don't know, you can't find it? That's okay.
It was on the 4th of July that.
Well, that's okay, because we never talk about all these cuts that are coming, and they are coming. Nobody speaks to that, nobody talks about that. So when I, when, I like to think that when we as a board make some decisions that we have to make, when it's, when it's brought to us to have to make, then we have to keep in mind that things are going to change, and when they do change, we have to always think, and as I keep saying, of children first. They have to be the first ones that we have to keep in mind, what we're doing here, not only as a board, but as administrators, teachers, or what have you not. So, but most oftentimes, they're the ones that get cut, cut out of the equation. And so I wish you had had that, all those cuts that are coming, they're coming.
I believe it's, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, so I believe it was, I was talking about the $7 million.
Yes, it was several, it was several of them.
That the president signed, as well as the administration, but he sort of took that back, and, yeah, so, and what I did is I just sent the section-by-section breakdown.
Yeah. Thank you. I want Jo, I want Joel to read that, because he sent that. I'll just, you're legislating. Did you want him to do it?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So, on July 3rd, take my glasses off. See, the House passed the one big bill for 2018, 2014, this afternoon, sending a sweeping legislation to President, President Trump's desk to change, of course, he did sign already. The vote came after the breaking speech, the minority leader, Hakeem Jeffries, who spoke for eight hours and 45 minutes. Okay, so let me get to the bottom. Okay, so legislation reflects major domestic policies, priorities, and fulfills many of President Trump's campaign promises. It includes extension and expansion of the 2017 tax cuts, raises the tax local SALT deduction cap, and provides $150 billion for border wall constructions, immigration enforcement, and deportation. The legislation makes major changes to medical, Medicaid, by establishing work requirements and co-pays, restricting low states can finance their shares of cost while also reducing SNAP eligibility, new work requirements, and requirement states to share some program costs. And I believe SNAP is, is a title, part of a title grant as well. Yeah, and it just goes on, but I think those were some of the key areas. Did I miss anything?
Yes, because I don't know, Dr. Burney didn't speak on it, but I don't know if he's aware of it, you know, of these cuts that are coming. So I know that it came across our phone, you know, it's not nothing new. So I don't have anything to say. So the next board meeting that we will have will be July 22nd, 2025, here at the Administration Building. And we want to thank you all for your being patient, and for your time, and for your questions, and for your concerns. Thank you. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you.
And Graylin, wake up over there? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Trusty Rodriguez, second by Trusty Smith. Roll call, please.
Trusty Gomez?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trusty Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Thank you.
Okay, we gotta clear the room out.
Thank you.
We can get ready to go into something else. Thank you all.